It's past seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order this reconvene meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Ms. Colicetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, when we recessed yesterday, we were on item F4 of new business ordinance number 2024-06-024, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2024-2025 annual budget.
Just so I can have some clarity, so...
Mary Alice.
Thank you. Just so I can have some clarity, last night, rather, we went through all of the different presentations and proposals in the packet. There was a list of different options, right, that we could do. I believe the ones that we had consensus around were the arborist and the $200,000 for additional social service grants. I see Elizabeth shaking her head there. Is that correct?
Correct. Those are already included in the budget ordinance that you have.
Okay. So those are the ones that are already included, and the ones that are still up for conversation are the ones about the police budget, I believe.
Correct. And there was also the one about the amount of debt for the fire station.
Ah, and the amount for the fire station.
They're listed in the memo under additional proposed revisions to FY25 budget.
Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion that we keep our leveraged debt at $9 million instead of $10 million.
Is this a seconding situation? A second?
Yes, this would be a second situation. Is there any discussion? Yes, Chris?
The intent to move it back to $10 million was to free up $1 million to pay for all the things like a arborist, $200,000 of social service, pay for the social worker that we wanted to do. So that was the intent.
Thank you, Chris. Any other discussion? Mary Alice?
Sorry, is that on? There we go. My thoughts about this are I would like to see the city leverage as little debt as possible. I think the estimate for the amount that we would end up paying in interest over the 10 years for the additional million is $220,000, I believe if I have that number correctly. So I'd like to limit the amount of debt that we need to get in order for us to be able to build the firehouses, which was the purpose. And some people might think, well, why do we need to borrow money to build the firehouses? Well, vast majority of the people borrow money in order to buy a house, right, to build a house and so forth. This is kind of similar to that situation. So anything that we can do to lower the amount of our liability would be great.
Yes, Mayor Marlin.
Some additional information. The city currently has virtually no debt, which is almost unheard of for a city these days. So we are in a very good position to issue bonds because we've restored our financial position and are in a strong, you know, we have a strong financial health right now. We can get a pretty good rate on interest. So again, the city has virtually no debt, and it's actually very appropriate to borrow money when you have a 50-year or more investment like this. And I will note that the additional expenses of the social worker, the social service funding, and the arborist are already accommodated in the budget. We just need to make a little bit of an adjustment. We're slightly out of balance with the, after the additional of the social service funding, but that's easy enough to adjust. But again, the current budget can absorb that.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Jaya?
I have some.
Grace?
I'll get you in a second. I just recognized Jaya.
Can we clarify, so this is on the budget as a whole, not related to that item? Are we at a point where we can make another suggestion, I guess?
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Are you wanting to amend the motion, or?
I guess I need clarity in terms of where, what is the, are you talking about the motion related to the debt, or are we talking about a different piece? Are we still discussing the debt?
We need to resolve the motion that Mary Alice has made with regard to keeping the debt at $9 million.
Okay.
And then we can entertain other...
Thank you.
Other motions.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, Grace?
I agree with expanding social service funding, and I think we have, well, we have already done that to some extent in this year's budget. I think that borrowing less does make sense to pay less taxpayer money on interest overall. From what I recall, it would be $220,000 over 10 years, which is still only 10% of the annual police department increases. And while I don't love spending that much money on the stations, I understand that it's a big capital investment. I do think that avoiding the less interest would be better, and I hope that we can balance this budget with other reductions this year instead.
All right. Mayor Marlin?
Just want to add, so the public knows, we're getting about $2.5 million in grants through the state of Illinois to help pay for the fire stations, and then the rest of it will be funded with savings. So it's a combination, and this was at council direction, to seek grants, use some savings, and then bond what we needed to.
All right. Thank you. Are we ready to vote on this one? And we're voting on, if you vote in the affirmative, you're supporting keeping the fire station debt at $9 million. That's the gist of your motion, right, Mary Alice?
Yep, that's correct.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That motion passes. Jaya, did you want to make another motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the $105,648 that was previously allocated to the public safety study remain available for that purpose or implementation of recommendations from the study.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Grace. Discussion. Jaya, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, this is something I did speak with Shandra about since she wasn't able to be here, as well as wanting to make sure that we have the funds that we need in case the study needs additional time or we need an additional consultant to make sure that we are fully exploring all possibilities for alternate response, not just those that might be located within the police department, and to give us a starting point for potential implementation of any recommendations that we would like to move on within this fiscal year. I think this is money that was not originally noticed as something that would be available, and I think that having it available to start moving us along the process of having alternate responses, this is a good, good starting point.
All right, Mary Alice.
Sorry, this keeps not turning on. I wanted to ask for clarification. So at the moment, with the budget that we had, where was $103,000 or $105,000, Elizabeth? I know you sent us something, but I can't put my fingers on it.
It's in the memo. So our intention when we were preparing the proposed budget was that we would move that out of police administration, and it would offset some of the new expenditures. However, we missed that entry, so currently it's sitting still in police administration if we don't include that change in the budget ordinance.
All right. Thanks for the clarification.
All right. Further discussion? Grace?
Thank you. I was wondering if, Jaya, the intention is to keep it there in police admin, or if you wanted it in the general fund or somewhere else?
So I don't have a specific preference, as long as it is clearly meant specifically for further evaluation of alternate responses or implementation under City Council guidance of recommendations related to alternate responses. But I'm happy to amend my motion if you have specific feedback.
I do have a follow-up question, if I may.
Go ahead, Grace.
I'm just wondering how we do that, because what I recall, that's what we tried to do with a few years ago in the process of starting all of this, and I'm not sure if it does go in the budget ordinance. If so, we know now in the binding part, or if the budget is supposedly not the place for that discussion or any binding language on how the money is spent, then it might make sense to move the money to avoid that again.
So I would like to ask Elizabeth if you have a recommendation.
So really, the only place where we could hold that money that would require another council action to decide how it would be spent is if we hold it in fund balance, and then a budget amendment would be required before it could be spent.
So is where it's at currently limiting as to how it can be spent?
I mean, there are limits in terms of what the budget is, but you'd be relying on, we would be, and I think this is safe, to rely on the police administration not to spend that on something else, once it's in their budget.
So Jaya?
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion to clarify that. I'd like this in the general fund balance for the same purpose.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question? The way the budget is lined out now, is it moved to the general fund? Isn't that what was intended?
Correct. I mean, once we take it out of expenditures, essentially, that's where everything that's left is sitting.
I guess my question is, do we need to amend for that to happen, or is a motion required for that to happen?
So I think you would not need to amend the ordinance because it is coming out of expenditures, right? But what we would need to do is to make sure that we have the capacity to absorb an additional $105,000 in recurring expenditures at the point where council would decide to spend that money.
So if I understand this correctly, the way the budget is lined out right now, that is being swept into the general fund, so we would have to authorize its expenditure? And so that would mean doing nothing will cause that to happen? So Jaya?
Yeah, I think Grace's point, I want to clarify, first of all, I'm not stating this as a recurring expense. I hope that we do complete an actual evaluation of alternate models within this next fiscal year, and that we can start looking at implementation. I do think that the language specifically stating what it is for in a binding, whatever portion of a binding part of the ordinance is important. It is unfortunate, but the initial intent and allocation of funding for the exploration of alternate responses was not honored in the way that it was stated in the budget because it was put in a non-binding section. So I will say I don't have the expertise to say exactly where that needs to be, but what I'm advocating for is making it clear in terms of the purpose of this funding in a place that will allow for council to determine its use in the appropriate time in a way that is actually binding to make sure it does not end up getting used for a different purpose than intended, which is what happened previously.
All right. So I would ask again, Elizabeth, what, how should Jaya state her motion for that intent to be cleared?
Carol, do you have any thoughts on this that you can help me out with?
It sounds like rather than have it in the general fund balance, you almost want a special place that is designated, but without a spending authority.
I mean, because then it would come back to council for authorization. That is, I want to make sure that it's clear what the purpose is and that there will be council involvement in allocating those funds, yes.
So if it's in fund balance, then there has to be council involvement because that requires a budget amendment to move that into an expenditure line.
What I'm hearing from Jaya, though, is she wants it sort of like discreetly fenced off, not just part of the big fund balance, but you want to say, we allocated $105,000, and it's sitting there for this express purpose until we decide how to spend it. It's sitting there kind of in a fenced-off status. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
So I admit I have no idea how much work this would take, but looking at some of our special funds, one of our funds is the American Rescue Plan Fund. How difficult would it be to create a fund for alternative response and just have that Should I repeat? Please. Okay. So I'll preface this with, I have no idea what type of work this would require, but I'm wondering if we could set up something similar to what we did with the ARPA funds, where we have a specific fund called alternate response.
So from an accounting perspective, I wouldn't recommend setting up a separate fund to hold $105,000. Setting up a separate fund creates more work in a whole lot of ways. We have to track separate cash balances. We have to allocate interest. Our auditors have to audit an additional fund. We could do it, but I'm not sure that that, I'm not sure that that would make sense. So what I'm saying is, once something's budgeted as an expenditure, right, it's budgeted as an expenditure at that point. So I think what we're saying is we don't want to budget it as, and it's an expenditure because we want council to have to make a deliberate decision to spend it on something So if you look at the general fund fund statement in your budget book, so at the bottom of that page, we kind of have notes about things that we're tracking as part of the fund balance, right? So we have the note that says of the $17 million, you know, 5.285 is reserved for future expenditures, 4.5 for future transfers to capital improvements, and so on. So if we leave it in fund balance, we can designate it that way, but that's not necessarily legally binding. I'm not quite sure how to do that because the budget is numbers, right? It's not, it's not, it's not specific decisions, or it doesn't incorporate specific direction other than this is the budget for different things.
Go ahead, Jaya.
Could you point us to the page for that by any chance? 47, thank you. And I will, again, and I'm not trying to speak for Grace, but I think she raises an important point, is we tried this before, and what this council agreed to wasn't respected. So I'm not sure, this is not my area of expertise, what it takes to make sure this money is protected in the way, if this council agrees that this is something that we want to do, that it remains available. Because when we have gone on faith that in writing it into the budget in the past, it was not used, a portion of that was not, was not respected in terms of the intent. And that's not the budgetary part in that previous situation. That was explicit direction to not move forward with any alternate response model without council approval. But that portion was put in a non-binding part of the budget ordinance in the past. So that is my intent in terms of saying, we need to figure out where this goes, that it isn't just so nebulous that it's like, well, there is money there to spend if and when we get there, but to make sure that it's spent and there's a process for allocating those funds specifically related to alternate response. And I think Mary Alice's question is a good one, is do you understand that it can create an extra headache? But having it clearly allocated for an explicit purpose, which, you know, we don't yet know exactly what that's going to mean, so we can't specifically say we want to spend it on hiring social workers or whatever because we don't have that portion of the study yet done. We also don't yet know whether Barry Dunn is going to look at alternatives outside of the police department, which is certainly something I would like to see. So again, I think that we need clarity in terms of, and you know, this is, so far we have a motion and a second. We don't know if this is specifically going to move forward, but if it does, I do think it's important that there is a process to ensure that it's used for what is intended.
Carol?
I just want to, I think this might, what Elizabeth is suggesting might be the way to go. I don't know. The fact of the matter is, if you don't allocate, certain amounts of, if you don't allocate the fund balance, whatever is done in the course of the budget year has, the council has to pass a budget amendment to allocate that. We could have a note so that in the, you know, in the press of business, we don't accidentally suggest that, oh, we need to, there's this thing that we need to do, something catastrophic happened, and we need to allocate some amount of fund balance, and then inadvertently take that amount, the 105, and push us up to our financial policy limit. And so this seems like a good way to have basically a reminder for everybody that, in the same way that we have the reminder that, hey, we've already allocated certain amounts in the CIP for things in the future, this would seem like the right way to handle it, and there is no way for staff to spend that money without council authorizing it. And having a note then would allow everybody to remember, oh, there's a certain amount of that that was intended for alternative response. And you might end up adding to that, too. So anyway, I feel like this can get it done, and maybe for now, you, since it seems like an administrative type of thing that maybe we could give some more thought to between now and next week, depending on how the voting goes. But I don't think this is a bad option. There might be a better one.
Jane?
Yes, Grace.
I'm not, Carol, I might need some clarification after I have some thoughts and questions here on what you were proposing. I understand the issue that if it's in the budget already, then it doesn't require any further council approval, and we have past history to question something, saying that there would be council approval once it's in the budget. And then we could leave it in the fund balance, and then that would require a budget amendment. The issue is, there is no fund balance currently in this proposed budget, right? This money was already taken for an arborist. We need to cut back other places, but that's the issue, is that if it's not designated, then it can just be spent, and there is no fund balance left. So I think that it needs to be somewhere in between. I thought Carol mentioned the words of designating money without spending authority in a fund. I like the sound of that idea. That seems to be a route to go, to be sure that there is money available, but it won't be spent without further council approval. And I think that that is what I, what my intentions are in this.
All right. It is important. Would you mention how much the fund balance is?
Sure. In the proposed budget, the fund balance in the general fund is $17 million and some odd dollars, of which 5.285 million is reserved for things that are described on page 47 in the budget book. I think that the real trick here is making that we have, making sure that we have an appropriate gap between our policy limit on recurring expenditures and what's actually in the budget so that later, when council makes a decision and wants to amend the budget to add that expenditure, we're not exceeding our policy limit. I think that's the trick. And I will make sure, as you're talking through different changes, that we keep track of that. Right now, I think in the memo I sent you, I said we needed to reduce recurring expenditures by about $76,000 to get below that limit. So if you want to also hold back this $105,000, that makes it, you know, roughly $180,000 that we need to make sure, to find to make up that gap.
Yes, Jaya?
I think another point of clarification that's important, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe some council members have been told that we can't bring forward a budget amendment. Can you clarify that, if we're talking about potentially keeping this somewhere that would require a budget amendment to spend it?
I think it would be helpful if, and Dave Westner wasn't available to come this evening, but my understanding is that only the mayor can bring forward a budget amendment. So, but that would be true whether it was, hmm, that's interesting. Okay. Interesting.
Yes, Jaya.
So I think that's another important factor, right, of like, if we're saying this money would be available, but then council doesn't have the ability to say, we want you to bring this forward for this purpose at this time, it doesn't actually meet the intent. And I understand that we might not have all of the staff needed, and I'm not exactly sure what that process looks like, you know, recognizing this is committee of the whole, this isn't final action. But again, I clarify that in recommending that we set this money aside, that it be intended, like Mary Alice described, for alternate response that would be directed by the council. So I do think that it's important that it's somehow allocated in a way that council would have a say in terms of when it would be utilized, and it wouldn't be just dependent on whether or not a budget amendment was brought forward by the mayor.
I think the best I can offer right now is that we'll continue to think about what options there might be to do this, and then, again, depending on where the voting goes. So I hope that's okay for now.
Mary Alice?
So I'd just like to say that it would be good if we could vote on this so that the staff can figure out which direction to go. And I don't know if we're in the discussion portion yet. If we are, this makes sense to me?
We are.
Okay. I want to reserve some money for alternative response. I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't know the mechanics on how to get it done, but I think at the end of the day, we want to be able to point to a specific amount of money that says, this is our starting pot, this is what we're going to use when we do whatever that alternative response model looks like. So I will be voting for that process, or rather, the...
Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. And I would like to clarify, too, that I think that there's a very good likeliness that we would need to allocate additional funding, as, you know, staff have also brought up of, depending on what is put forward. But at least that this would be something that's already been part of this process of trying to explore alternate responses, that it would continue to be used for that purpose. And I totally understand the need to take more time to figure out what that process might look like.
So could I suggest two parts here? Maybe that this motion be withdrawn, and that we conduct a straw poll on support for the concept of setting aside at least the amount associated with this in a way that we've talked about?
Sure.
Since we don't know exactly how to move what the intent is, then this would give some more time for thought on how to accomplish that.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Jaya.
Just, I guess, I just want to clarify because this has been quite a, quite a process in terms of straw polls and whatnot. If we do, I guess, in terms of the intent, right, of straw polling, are we talking about bringing this back today, or are you talking about postponing further discussion to next week? Because I will say for myself, I understand the need, you know, before we go too far down this rabbit hole to see if there's even interest from the council to do a straw poll. But while I recognize that we might not have everything that we need to make a final motion, I do think it's important that as we move this budget ordinance forward, that it is written into it. So I want to make sure that we do come back to it tonight.
So, yeah, the intent of this straw poll would be to show council support for the concept, and then we would have to do something different next week to codify it or make an amendment to the language that supports the path that we choose to do that. So the trick is in the question, in the straw poll, which I would, if you're comfortable withdrawing the motion, which I think is the first step we have to do, because it's not clear what the motion, how the motion works. Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, sorry. I'm struggling a little bit to answer this because I do think we need more information. We need to have a sense for where people stand, but I also have concerns about not having this in whatever budget ordinance moves forward tonight. Because I think, I think it's important that it's there. This is not a final vote. You know, there will be an opportunity for further clarification before next week's vote, so I feel more comfortable with it as a motion versus just a straw poll item.
And then I would suggest that the motion be restated as a declaration of intent rather than specific direction on how to fix the language of the budget.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes. I'm willing to amend my motion to express an intent to allocate the $105,000 and change funding that has been previously allocated to the alternate response exploration, or the Barry Dunn study, for further use towards supporting alternate response in whatever manner... manner will ensure availability for council allocation in FY '25.
Grace, are you comfortable with that restating?
Yes, I'll resecond.
Okay. All right. So, any further discussion now that we have it restated as that? Are we ready to vote on this question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion passes. Any further discussion, or are we ready to make a motion on the budget? Yes, Jaya.
I would recommend that the increase in funding for police staffing be removed from this budget until the Barry Dunn study is complete.
Okay.
And just to clarify, that's the bullet point number one in the memo?
I will try to get back to it. There are a lot of documents open right now.
It refers to 899, 899, 899, 899,000 annual and 806 one-time cost?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry, did I hear a second for that motion?
Yes, Grace.
Grace, okay, Grace seconded. Discussion. Yes, Chris.
In support of removing the money on those staff, police staffing positions for now, I would submit tonight, on page 45 from the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, released in May of 2015, under pillar number four, community policing and crime reduction, recommendation 4.5 says, quote, "Community policing emphasizes working with neighborhood residents to co-produce public safety. Law enforcement agencies should work with community residents to identify problems and collaborate on implementing solutions that produce meaningful results for the community," end quote. And on page 46, the 4.5.3 action item says, quote, "Law enforcement agencies should establish formal community citizen advisory committees to assist in developing crime prevention strategies and agency policies, as well as provide input on policing issues," end quote. On pages 159 and 160 of the first Barry Dunn report, it says, quote, "Barry Dunn encourages UPD to explore formally adopting a co-production policing model, and that the UPD work collaboratively with city leaders and the community to evolve police strategies, approaches, operations, and community involvement through this model. As a starting point, the city could establish a committee that represents the unique diversity of the community, and possesses real and substantive authority to review and guide decisions about community safety, law enforcement, justice, and the roles and strategies and approaches of policing within that broader environment," end quote. At the August 16, 2023, police press conference, Urbana Police Chief Larry Boone said, quote, "Once we get the capacity that's required to do the authentic policing, we're going to be in communities door-to-door, asking the citizens of Urbana, how do we police you, okay? I think as a profession, we have a tendency to think that we know what's best for the community. I think we have to allow the community an opportunity to have input, whether it's policies, procedures, things of that nature. Historically, we've been guarded," end quote. At the May 28 city council meeting, President Pearson of the NAACP of Champaign County said, quote, "I want to advocate for a face-to-face interaction where community members can directly voice their concerns and receive immediate answers from the chief himself and other police officers as well. Collaboration and transparency emphasizes the need for collaborative efforts between the police and the community to build trust and work toward common goals. This is key," end quote. And at this April 29 city council meeting, the Cunningham Township Supervisor said, quote, "In our review of successful alternative responder models, they have always been built in close community partnership with existing organizations who have expertise in providing crisis response. How does the city and Barry Dunn intend to move in collaboration to build an effective model that works? I would like to suggest that council create an alternative responder model task force that walks alongside the Barry Dunn work." And for those reasons, I would recommend postponing the funding and the vote on the police staffing.
Mary Alice.
All right, well, I didn't write up anything formal, so hopefully this is understandable. So, a couple of things that I've heard from the community is that we're going too fast, that we need to hold off. And in some regards, I agree with the community. I do think that we don't know at this time what that alternative response model is going to look like. But on the other hand, we have to address the lack of staffing that we have currently for the calls of service that we have. So I feel like we need to find a balance here that represents the knowledge that we're going to build something new, or we're going to change how we're going to do it, but also, at the same time, give the resources that are needed at the moment in order to be able to handle the calls for service. So, for that reason, I will not be voting for a complete elimination. I am more interested in looking at strategically what types of positions would be able to fill that gap while we build the alternative response model. And I would like to go on the record and say that I do feel that we should have a task force, a committee, a group of individuals that would help us craft what this alternative response model is going to look like. So, I agree with many of the people who have asked for it. I agree with Chris on that point, but that's my stance.
Jaya.
Yeah, thank you. I actually think that probably, there's a, a lot of us are not as far off from each other as it might seem. I think that making sure that we have adequate staffing is important. But I also, you know, I appreciate your answer, Mary Alice. I still challenge folks who haven't asked that question of why now, to answer it. I don't think that we're going to cause an undue burden by asking for a few more months, potentially, to ensure that we can establish a committee, that we can have community involvement, that we can co-create something that'll ensure that our officers are not being asked to do work in a manner that's not safe for them, that we can make sure that we're addressing the overtime that we're seeing from officers that's being requested, and that we're looking at who is doing the work in our community that, as we define safety. I think we brought a lot of expertise into this community to be part of that, but as I previously stated, I think there's also a lot of expertise that has not been given an opportunity to even be involved. So I think, I know this is not a comfortable way to do this for a lot of folks. I wish this is a conversation that had been transparently happening with our community months before we came to a budget, but we didn't do that. And I think that it's important that our community members have a chance to weigh in. I do think that we need a task force to say, okay, this, these are our goals, these are our values, these are the gaps that we're identifying. And I'm not discounting the fact that there are gaps that have been there for a very long time. I just don't think that it's appropriate to rush a response, especially based on the community input that we have heard. Again, I can say for my ward, there have been a few exceptions, and I respect those differences of opinions, but the vast majority have said, please, slow down, please let us have a say, please remember that you represent us and our voices matter.
I have a virtual hand up.
Yes, Grace, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Jaya's sentiments there, absolutely. I've already made points in the past few weeks about the budget issues and the concerns with increasing police duties, and a reminder, also to Mary Alice's point, that more officers means increasing police duties, not decreasing overtime, which is also a shared goal of mine. I think it's ironic and counterproductive to make especially a community engagement office without collaborating with the community in any form of public safety, but especially to make a community engagement office. I think that talking to 60 people individually doesn't count as meaningful public engagement. I imagine that there's been a lot of confirmation bias, and people who are inclined to approach and meet with the new chief of police are the people who agree with him. And from what I've heard, he hasn't met with or had meaningful consultation or work with many key groups and stakeholders, including first followers in the Cunningham Township, to my understanding. At the Ward Six Police Listening Session, there were many diverse perspectives and opinions shared, just to counter narrative that everyone she's talked to has agreed with this expansion. There was not a community consensus for more policing at that meeting, which had a pretty good turnout, I'd say more than 60 people. And one member of the public specifically asked me to mention their open opposition to police expansion that was expressed at that listening session. So I agree that we need to wait and come up with a community, public health-focused plan to create a healthy, safe, and resilient community. I agree with forming a community task force with stakeholders and doing a holistic survey of needs of the community that we want to support. And we can't do all that if we spend our expendable taxpayer money on police increases now. So I'd say let's not pass the expansion now and figure out, one, a holistic and well-planned community response model, and, two, the appropriate level of police staffing, given the alternative response model, which needs to be considered when we're talking about police staffing. And also in that, how that staffing will affect patrol overtime, which is still completely unclear. From my understanding, more officers will not reduce overtime, it will support increasing their workload. I think we need to reduce overtime, increase training, and be sure that we support and train our officers to be in the appropriate situation, and there's not a clear plan about how hiring any more officers in this fiscal year will accomplish that.
Sharice.
Okay, I'm just going to say this. Chief Boone is here in the room, we need to stop talking about him like he's not. Chief Boone, I'm going to ask you, if you would please come forward and maybe give us some answers to these questions and other things that.
Point of order, is that part of the process for a motion?
If you have specific questions to ask Chief Boone?
Yeah. I'd like to ask him about.
I didn't ask any questions.
Well, I thought this was the discussion time, so I think that he could be more informative about all these things, don't you?
If you have specific questions, like we ask Elizabeth and so forth.
Well, Grace brought up a lot of, a lot of issues about overtime, and how many police, and all that kind of stuff, so.
But do you have questions?
I've already had the opportunity to ask those questions. I had no questions in that previous.
Do you have questions you want to ask?
You know what, forget it.
Mary Alice.
I apologize, I think Chris is the only one who hasn't spoken, so I don't, I've already spoken once.
He led off.
I led.
It was long. You should have remembered it.
So, a couple of things, kind of to what Grace and Jaya are saying. The first one is time. I mean, it would be great if we were able to stand up an alternative response system this upcoming fiscal year. I just don't think that's going to happen. If we have a committee, or a task force, or some kind of group that helps to build that, that takes time. It takes time to gather information, and so, more realistically, I think it would be a two-year, basically. And so, because of that, I think that we do need to add some police staffing. I don't think we need to add all of the police staffing. In terms of the people who have contacted me specifically, I have had mixed responses. I didn't tally them up, but I've had like back-and-forth email responses with several people in my ward. Some people, interestingly enough, several people talk about the police's role in domestic violence, and how helpful that is to those situations. So, you know, again, I'll just say that I think that we have a timing issue, and in the real world, there's lots of different moving parts in terms of when we do different things. I feel like Barry Dunn said that we needed 13 positions, the police are asking for 11 positions. I'm not even ready to fund 11 positions, but I do think we need to give some relief to the police department.
Go ahead, Jaya.
Thank you. To clarify, I'm not suggesting that we don't have that conversation about police staffing until there's an alternate response model fully in place, but I don't think that there has been an opportunity for this council and this community to understand exactly what's being asked for, and I think that it's important to be able to take that step back and figure that out. The request for this study happened three years ago. It is taking a long time. I think it's something that should have been prioritized and moved along more quickly. But I also think that that's in response to this community's requests. And again, we work for the people of Urbana, and I think that it's important that we take the time to make sure that we understand the gaps that we have, and we're able to make a plan that is fiscally responsible, that doesn't preclude other options going forward.
Mary Alice, can you take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes James.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to speak to the current motion, which would do no funding, which is not, at this point, something I can support. When I ran for office, this was a topic. This was a clear item. In fact, I was encouraged to run for office by people in Ward Seven that were concerned about public safety and how things were. And as I ran, I said, the important question is not one person's view of public safety, but a broader view of public safety. I do get feedback that tells me, don't hire any police officers. I also get feedback that asks why we have been talking about this for so long and not doing anything, why we went out and hired a progressive, seasoned police chief to help us move forward with this, and why we are not acting on his request to staff his department in the way he sees fit. I am not ready to support the budget as it stands. I have said many times that I believe that there is a gap in where we are staffed now and where we need to be. I'm not sure how big that gap is. That's why I want to keep the growth small until we move forward with an alternate response model that will help us move some of these things off. But I have also engaged in this conversation with LEAP, with Chief Tom Thompson, who is involved with Dayton's alternate response model. And one of the things that became clear to me from that conversation is, that model is successful because it is a collaboration between the different units that come together to make that alternate response model. And one of the groups involved in that is a staffed and collaborating police force. I believe that our alternate response model is going to reduce the number of events that we need to send an armed officer to. I don't know by how much. These collaborative efforts, these alternate response models, have a large number of visits that do have a police officer accompanying them, because they're working together to address the problem and address the questions that come before them. So, right now, I'm not comfortable saying nothing. I have, add nothing. I do believe we need to support the administrative structure and add a net to a number of patrol officers, the item that says, hire the deputy chief, hire the training sergeant, because that's very important, and increase our ability to staff our patrol. And so, at this point in time, I can't vote for taking it all out. I think we need to talk about how much we need to grow, and do that in a measured fashion. I think some of the aspects that are in here that are partly alternate response answers need to be maybe put on hold, probably put on hold, until we really approach the alternate response model. But I can't vote for the motion that's currently on the floor.
Take the chair back?
I will take the chair back.
All right, it's yours.
Yes, Sharice.
I'm in agreement with you. I try to remember in past budgets, the one thing that can be done with the budget is it can be amended. So, if during the year, we need further funding, or maybe. So, if during the year, we need further funding or maybe funding going to another area or something to that effect, we've never not had the opportunity to amend that budget, you know? So I think that rather than throwing the baby out with the bathwater, that we should think in terms of incremental increments and not just saying no. You know, it's a... Excuse me?
I had a point of clarification on the "we" that we clarified that council cannot initiate a budget amendment.
"We" means city, the city in general. The council? I don't know. I had to be so incredibly specific.
No, the council cannot initiate a budget amendment.
The fact of the matter is that there's always been a time when we've had to amend budgets for different things. And I don't think that, as far as thinking about this budget, that there should just be a cutting out of anything. Because I don't know about anybody else. I'm not a prognosticator. I can't, I don't know what's gonna happen in the future. So I would like to have, I'd like to always have something there in the event of something that needs to be paid for and needs to be taken care of.
All right. Are we ready to vote on this question? I'll remind everyone that voting on this question, voting yes, is in favor of removing all police expansion that is in the current budget, as described in bullet point one in our packet. Everybody clear on what we're voting on and what an affirmative vote means? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No. That is a three-to-three vote, and so that fails because it is a tie. Further discussion on the budget.
Do you have questions?
Yes, Grace.
This is a question for the police department now, is what number of officers would reduce overtime by how much?
My original request was fifteen officers, based on calls for service, based on conversations and what I heard, we wanted within the police department. Overtime, as I...
But overtime was still increasing in that, so is there any number of officers to hire that would reduce overtime in the department?
So what I was going to say, overtime is so difficult to measure. I would hope that the level with respect to the number of officers in terms of percentages would lower. But again, I can't see the future. I don't know what events may occur. I don't know what events we may have to detail officers to. I understand the concern amongst all of you. I understand it. Point of clarity, I did meet with first followers. I was at their establishment, and I had a good time. They seem to have had a good time. I agree with Mr. Evans. He and I are speaking past one another. My history has demonstrated everything you've said. I have always said, "Community is at the center of every decision you make." You can go back five, ten, fifteen years. That's what I've always said. We're just speaking past one another. So, with respect to overtime, I can't give you a definitive, but I can say that I will do everything within my power as chief to put control measures on overtime.
And I have another discussion, James, but I'm sorry, I can't see the hand.
Grace, Chris had his hand up. Do you mind going next after him?
Sure, yeah, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I wanna divide the question. I wanna separate out the one deputy chief, the one training sergeant, the three patrol police officers, three community engagement police officers, and two non-sworn community service responders. I would like to divide the question and that we consider those positions separately.
So, yes, clerk.
Yeah, if I may ask a clarifying question to that motion to divide the question, are you asking to take those individually, like, one, two, three, four? Or are you saying we pull them separate for a vote to consider them separate from the budget as a whole?
I guess I'm...
We don't currently have a question on the floor?
Correct.
We don't have a motion on the floor?
Right, because we don't have a motion to approve the budget yet.
Oh, okay, all right. Do I have to wait for a motion to approve the entire budget?
Yes, because that would be the question that you're dividing, would be the question of adopting the budget.
That's right.
So you would... You're okay. When we come to that, though, will we clarify what we're dividing?
It would be reasonable for you to suggest a process for us to tackle the various components.
I guess, like we did last week, I think we have, I just wanna separate all the positions out, and then we begin the process like we did last week of what combination you guys want, or what's the menu here, or, yeah, the combination that you're wanting.
Yes, Mary Ellen.
I think Elizabeth in her memo kind of chunked things out according to how we had divided them last week. So if you take each bullet point separately, you probably could get a sense of, you probably could achieve what you're trying to do, if I understand. They were already divided out last week, and that's how Elizabeth presented them in the memo tonight.
Okay.
So if you look at the memo and go by that, that provides a good framework for considering each separately.
Before we do that, I just want to ask a point of clarification. So Darcy had said that we need a motion about the budget before we start talking about adding and subtracting from the budget. Is that correct?
So that would be the cleanest, and if you intend to divide the question, which is to consider them one by one, then you have to have a question to divide, which is a motion to approve or deny.
Okay, so I think the way forward here is for me to make a motion to move the budget forward so that we can then have a conversation about any additions or subtractions that we haven't already talked about. So I'm, does that sound right to everybody?
I assume to City Council for the regular agenda.
Right, yep. So I will move approval of the proposed fiscal budget to the regular agenda at the next City Council meeting to include what has been already discussed, which would be the addition of an arborist.
It's already in there.
It's already, it's in this one, right?
Yeah. The only thing we've discussed that is a difference tonight is guidance on the debt, which is keeping it at nine million, which is in the budget already, and the guidance on what to do with one hundred and five thousand.
Okay.
Those are the two things we've talked about so far.
So it sounds like we have everything except for the individual bullet points that Elizabeth did, which, okay, all right, so that's my motion. My motion is to move it forward to the regular agenda with the recommendation for approval.
Do we have a second? If there is no second, there is no motion.
If there is no motion, there is no discussion. We can only ask questions about the presentation at this point.
Can I make a different motion?
I have a question.
Yes, Grace.
And also some clarification, but it seems to me that overtime is measured and taxpayers pay for it, and that there is a way to limit it, and the only way for council to do that would be reducing the overtime in the budget. And my question is, if we expand the police department in this fiscal year, do we still finish the Barry Dunn report? And if so, what?
So, thank you, Grace. I would say, yes, we do finish the Barry Dunn report, because we do need to have a conversation and an alternate response model outcome, and that is what we're waiting for from the Barry Dunn report. But that's only my opinion. Yes, Sharice?
In regards to the last motion, can it still be seconded or no?
No, it failed for lack of a second, but there can be another motion.
All right, can I make another motion?
I recognize Mary Alice.
All right, I will move that we move the budget to the next City Council meeting with no recommendation.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sharice. Discussion.
Point of clarification, is that still including the two items previously mentioned? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Yes, Chris.
Thank you. So then again, I'll motion to divide the question and pull out the one deputy chief, the one training sergeant, three patrol police officers, three community engagement police officers, and two non-sworn community service responders.
Once again, I will ask to clarify, are we taking that chunk of positions that you outlined as one up or down, or are we taking them one, two, three?
What do you want to do? It would be easier if you would just move to maybe remove each one of those items, and then we could have an up-and-down vote on...
On all of them, or?
No, each one.
Each of them, okay, that's fine.
Since that's, I think that's a totally appropriate way to approach this.
I'm okay with that.
Grace, did you have any questions before we move on?
So with...
No, thank you. I'd help with the motion.
So to clarify, with dividing the question, a second is not needed. Any member may motion and ask for the question to be divided. To clarify, Chris, then which item are you dividing for this motion?
Actually, we've discussed that he's now just gonna make a motion on amendment on each item, and we'll take them one at a time.
Via division of the question?
No, this would be amendment.
Okay.
I propose an amendment.
Dividing the question would result in...
Yeah.
Point of clarification, so I think I want to make sure that we're understanding intent before we move forward. I thought I was hearing Chris suggest that the non-police portion of this budget be separated out and that then each of the individual police items be reviewed independently. Is that correct?
That would be one way. I mean...
Because I think the alternative with the way it's been phrased would be the budget non-police items plus all of the police items together? So I think clarifying if you're wanting people to go down the list of each individual one, if that is the intent, that that's clearly stated.
Amenable to however you want to do it, I mean, really...
I don't want to overstep it.
I just want us to consider the police staffing separately in some kind of way.
I guess my question would be, how is that substantially different than the vote we just did, if we do it all together versus as individual items, right?
Yeah, I mean, I was okay with if you want to just take the whole package and vote on that up or down, that's fine, too. Go ahead.
Yes, Mary Alice.
I thought we did that. We already voted on the whole package, and it got voted, right? It didn't, oh, okay.
What we're trying to find is how much, right? There was a question about whether we would remove it all or not, and we're deadlocked on that. So now we have to look at what are the individual components that we could, I guess, compromise on? And, I mean, whether we do that in chunks or by dividing it, I think it's gonna result in us having a conversation about each component and having a vote on each component. And whatever way gets us there, I'm comfortable with.
I think in order to accommodate the, what the council said last week, as everybody wanted different positions and all that, we take each one separately and just, yeah, okay, so first motion, the motion to approve one deputy chief.
I'm sorry, I just, I think I'm still, I want clarification. Are we dividing the question so that we need to vote on the non-police items of the budget? And then looking at each of those, are you trying to suggest an amendment using each of those individual and keeping it as one budget amendment or a budget proposal?
I'm gonna suggest that as a concept, the budget as a whole moves forward. And so now what we're trying to do is determine what things we can agree on taking out of the budget. Because I will also add that we need to take some things out of the budget, because we're above the amount that we should spend. And so, the question is, which of those, it feels like those things that we are going to take out is with respect to how many police officers we're gonna add.
Okay, so these individual motions are motions to take out, then?
That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
Because as it is, they're in. And so, you're moving to amend, which would be to take them out.
Okay, and we're doing this one at a time?
I think we're gonna end up doing that anyway. Unless you want to, I mean, unless somebody has a suggestion of bundling some things together.
That's what I kinda want us to get debating. All right. Yeah, 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 okay.
I have a motion with a hand up.
Grace, what? Go ahead, Grace.
I would like to propose a motion to amend the current proposed budget to remove the community engagement officers and satellite hub on South Philo.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to remove the community engagement team and satellite facility. Discussion. Grace, do you want to speak to your motion?
I think I've already said a lot on it of the concerns. I think there are additional things I could say about concerns for overpolicing in the area, and we need to do a holistic needs assessment for what the community actually wants and needs. It may be a daycare or some other resource more than a police substation. So I think that, again, it's ironic to make a community engagement office without collaboratively working with the community. So I think there are a lot of issues for this that need to be thought out, and this is absolutely one that doesn't have the issue of saying that it could reduce overtime of the patrol officers. This is a completely extra thing.
All right, thank you, Grace. Other discussion. Mary Alice.
So my thoughts on this are, when the chief came and interviewed with us, he kind of brought some different ideas of some different programs that he had tried. I believe, I'm not sure the title of it, but it was basically clergyman, the clergy patrol, I think, was one of them. There were some other examples. And I personally was excited to have a different way of thinking about engagement with the community and public safety. This is a pilot project, so it's not something that is reoccurring. I take the comments that we had last night with somebody saying, "What does success look like?" I think that's a really good question. But I am in support of some of the community engagement office. I think it would be a great pilot, and I think it would offer the opportunity for the police to stand up something, working collaboratively with those communities there, right? So if we're gonna be collaborative, then we have to have people in all those different spaces. And so I think this will actually, hopefully, achieve that goal. So those are my thoughts.
Yes, Jay.
Yeah, I shared this previously, that I have been very frustrated in my time on council at the idea of just trying pilots that are not evidence-based. I know that there's a lot of expertise behind this proposal, but my question, when this came up three years ago, which related to the co-response model, is why this for Urbana? And I think that is still a question that we do not have answers to. It's part of the reason I continue to say we need to complete the study that we are undertaking. I think the question of what are the resources that are needed in that part of our community, which I know folks like to act like that's something we're very removed from. This area is very close to where I live. There are some incredible nonprofit organizations that are already located there, and I think there are incredible opportunities for expanding community impact. But I also am not gonna say that that's the right solution. I think we need more information. I think a pilot that is going to cost a lot of money for the city without knowing if this is the right fit for Urbana and specifically for that part of Urbana...
and specifically for that part of Urbana, is important. I don't think that we are at a place to move forward on this. Again, it's not going to address the understaffing on the day-to-day basis for our officers, which I think is, again, a valid concern. So I don't think this is an appropriate aspect to move forward on at this time.
All right, any other discussion? Yes, Chris?
Well, what motion are we working on here?
We're, we're working on a motion to amend to remove the community engagement.
Okay.
Officers and substation.
Okay, then yes, I would like to talk about that.
Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. It's been said, we have a ton of domestic violence here in Urbana. There is an awful lot of it, so much so, it's quite alarming. Domestic disputes are so high that the Urbana Police Department have to respond to it over and over and over. Indeed, if you look at the data, the Urbana Police Department have responded to over 14,000 domestic calls for service between the years 2011 and 2023. That averages to 1,229 calls a year, or three calls per day for this domestic disputes during those 12 years. As we saw in the November 6, 2023 presentation, outright domestic fistfights numbered over 1,200 over the last three years. That's 400 fistfights a year, or about one fistfight a day for the last three years. Domestic violence is the most pervasive and persistent crime in the city of Urbana. As it so happens, I have a four-year degree in domestic violence. If you will indulge me, let me tell you what the course curriculum is to earn a four-year degree in domestic violence. When I was 14 years old until I was 18 years old, during those four years of high school, my mother and I were physically beaten about once a month in an alcoholic rage by the man we were living with at the time. Domestic violence is not a broken heart symbol on a map to me. I lived it for four years. You say three to four calls for service, you say seven calls for service? Try more like 25 to 30 calls for service during those four years. The Champaign Police Department repeatedly had to come out to 2007 West Kirby Avenue and plead with us, would we please have quieter fistfights? We were disturbing the neighbors. And after the police would leave, ding ding, it's time for round two, right? Because now he's mad the cops got called. At the end of the four years during the last fistfight, I asked a Champaign police officer if he could just stand there, make sure nothing happens while my mom and I packed a few things because we were leaving. And for 15 minutes, that officer did exactly that. He stood guard while mom and I threw some things in a garbage bag to get out of there. I will always be grateful for that officer for doing that for us. Now, when mom and I hit the door with our change of clothes and a toothbrush, we had no car, we had no place to live, and we had no source of income. I bore everyone with this ancient boo-hoo story to say this. This ignorant civilian doofus simply doesn't understand how. Paying nine more police officers a starting salary of $76,000 a year, paying three more community engagement police officers a starting salary of over $80,000 a year, paying an additional SWAT Team Street Crimes Task Force police officer a starting salary of over $75,000 a year, paying a new training sergeant a starting salary of over $93,000 a year, and paying an additional deputy police chief a starting salary of at least $1,061 a year solves the problem of women and children trying to escape domestic violence when they have no transportation, no place to live, and no source of income. Therefore, out of respect for my mom and out of respect for all the mothers like her, I have to stay in my lane. We all know public safety is far more than just how many police officers you have. For decades, this community doesn't have enough inpatient mental health treatment spaces, doesn't have enough drug and alcohol treatment centers, doesn't have enough harm reduction medication sites, doesn't have enough emergency shelter beds, doesn't have enough affordable housing, doesn't have enough housing vouchers, doesn't have enough childcare, doesn't have enough after-school programs, doesn't have enough summer jobs programs, doesn't have enough living wage jobs, doesn't have enough mentorship programs, doesn't have enough academic support networks, doesn't have enough educational scholarships, doesn't have enough trade apprenticeships, doesn't have enough grants, and doesn't have enough small business loans. Consequently, with so much lack, you will never have enough jail cells. The police department cannot be expected to do it all by themselves. In order to prevent incidents of crime from ever happening, it will take the university, the local school districts, Parkland College, the hospitals, the local governments, the business community, the park districts, the trade unions, the nonprofit organizations, and the churches, all coming together to create the necessary economic development, substance abuse interventions, mental health treatments, educational opportunities, and family supports required to take a real bite out of crime. As Urbana Deputy Police Chief Richard Searls pointed out in the May 1, 2024 edition of the News Gazette, quote, "For decades, the burden has fallen squarely on the shoulders of sworn officers to solve a myriad of problems in the community. Some of those problems are not crime-related. Some of those problems are a result of the reduction of funding in the other areas of our society and government," end quote. Thanks for letting me speak.
For further discussion.
Sorry?
Is there further discussion?
No, but can you state exactly what the motion is?
The motion is to remove the customer relations officers and the station at Sunny Crest, the satellite station, from the budget.
All right, so like.
I do have more.
Yes, Grace?
Um, yes, and that's, yeah, the motion of removing the community engagement officers and satellite hub. I just wanted to add that I think that collaboration has to start at the design and creation phase with the community. I don't think that it makes any sense to say that we would implement something without that in the design phase. That's the same thing with sustainability and lead green buildings, is you have to start at the design and planning phase. So I think that's super important here, rather than as an afterthought after we've already funded and started a pilot program. I think, again, back to the question of then, why would we finish the Barry Dunn study? And how would we implement any alternative response? It's that we've already lost opportunities, the high opportunity costs financially, and with our time and energy in this temporary police pilot project. So I am curious why we would even finish that if we think we already have the system and the model figured out before we even finish it.
All right, further, further discussion. Yes, Sharice?
I, I, I have a question because I wasn't here last week. So my question is basically regarding this, this right now that's on the floor. Are we talking about, how many, how many engagement officers are we talking about? Number one, three?
There are three.
Okay, and number two, where would this, where would the satellite? Where are they, are we talking about possibly having?
It's described in the Sunny Crest area.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Where the Sunny Crest Mall is.
Okay, where Salt and Light is in that area? Are we talking about leasing space? Are we talking about?
Not sure that detail has been given.
Because it's a pilot, a three-year pilot, it would be a three-year lease. It would just be a lease in Sunny Crest Mall. And, um, what's the programming for it? Is there, is there any programming? I, I just need to know more. Is there any programming for this particular, um, uh, satellite base with the engagement officers? Because personally, I think engagement officers are important for a community, especially in that area right now. But at the same time, I'd like to know what the programming would be. Because it, Grace makes a point regarding not having those particular officers there if we do not have a community already engaged in, in, and what would, if, if part of the, the programming is that the officers are in the area actually talking to people door-to-door or something? I would just, I would like to understand what that's going to be.
Go ahead, Carol.
I do want to just say one thing, that it's the Philo Road area. It's not specifically Sunny Crest Mall that we'd be looking at. I just want to say that because.
Okay.
That is actually not what we would be looking at. But I, I think that Chief Boone is probably in the best position to say what the, what the community engagement team would, would do. But I do want to say that if there's a desired have, you know, that this, this programming be something that is very tailored to the community, then there need to be people to engage. So without personnel to, to even create that, that would be extremely challenging to even get anything off the ground that, you know, for, for the folks that feel like this isn't baked. It, it, you need someone to engage with the community in order to create the, the model. I think Chief Boone can talk about what has been done in Norfolk and other communities he's familiar with, if you want more detail. But just wanted to point out, there has to be somebody to do the work upfront to get something off the ground.
Go ahead, Sharice.
Can we discuss that kind of detail with Chief Boone, or is that out of order?
I would, I would suggest that if you have specific questions about the programming, and he's able to answer those, I think that's relevant to the question.
Okay. So he, he can answer my questions, I can ask him questions now, or? Okay, Chief Boone, can you please give me some information as to what the programming might be for community engagement officers? And do, is it necessary to have three? Or can we build upon that from having one? Not necessarily from the Philo Road area, but, um, is there a way that we can do that without use, without having to lease space right now?
Thank you for the question. The Philo Road area was chose primarily because of data. Have you heard me say many times before, that's where I start. Some of the things done in Norfolk, I, I like to say that our community relations unit focused on ages five to silver, meaning everyone. We establish summer programs. We establish programs for young ladies whose father was missing in action by way of having sort of like a father-daughter dance. In addition to that, those young ladies were mentored by the female officers in my department. We established reading programs with public schools. The public schools identified those children in need of a tutor. And that particular program is still going on. We established a program where we looked after the senior citizens in those areas that we identified as needing help, particularly during COVID. We provided them with clothing, food, transportation to and from the hospital. We established well over 25 programs that have been adopted by many police departments. In the interest of time, I'd be happy to send all of you all those programs. Again, officers are in these locations identified through data. The door-to-door process is to understand the needs of the community. This satellite won't just be housed by officers. It'd be housed by clergy, it'd be housed by community leaders, it'd be housed by CCRT, it'd be housed by, depending on what council preference is with respect to alternative responses. It'd be housed by those folks as well, in addition to supervisor oversight. Every community is different, but I can tell you, crime is crime, and it's generally driven by poverty. And a community relations unit, their core function is, one, they have to be a good fit for that community. They have to already understand the challenges of that community. In addition to that, they have to have the ability to make or develop workable, actionable partnerships with various nonprofits to help with those issues in those communities. For an example, one of the things we wanted to do with respect to domestic violence is connect with Courage Connection. And we're in the unreal stages of just doing that. We provide them data, we met with them. Assistant Chief Deputy Chief, I should say, interim Deputy Chief Vane have talked with their leadership. We are in the process of developing practices where we both can address our blind spots. I know that I'm new to this area, and I know I come with a lot of concepts that may be foreign to you, but at the risk of speaking, um, from a position of, uh, just let me say this. These programs work. These programs build relationships. These programs will be a partnership with those folks in those areas. This is not one of those medical models where, I said earlier, we don't dictate the needs of the community, they tell us their needs. There's a reason why IACP, International Associations of Police Chiefs, want to feature Urbana Police Department next year in Boston because of some of the things that I've been able to do with respect to community in other places. And they're excited about the opportunities that exist here. I understand your concerns. I get it, and I know you have a difficult decision to make. And I want to be a good team player. But I also want to be true to myself, as well as the women and men of this department. I've modified that plan several times, and that's okay. I think as we start to develop data, and we start making that available for public consumption, people will understand the needs and why I'm making these requests. With respect to finances, I've started a process called Financial CompStat in which we track every dime spent and why. And you'll see that in the coming months with respect to how we do that in a presentation by Lisa Curtis. But I, I just, I understand, again, your, your concerns. I think in the interest of time, I'll, I'll just submit to you what you probably had already, some of the things we've done and how some of those things were measured. some of the things we've done, and how some of those things were measured.
So is there any way that instead of starting off with three officers, you said you already have engaged one officer, and it's starting to, is that what you said?
No, what I'm saying, there are several officers here that have that spirit for that kind of work. Okay? And that only makes sense is to place those officers in those positions. But I can't do that because if I'm taking officers away from the rank and file, I'm impacting them negatively. I have to have officers to replace those that I'm willing to put out in those areas to do that kind of work. So I would not, I want to underscore, would not recommend just one officer. We're talking about an area in which crime happens, folks. It does. We're talking about an area, just a month ago, one of my officers, his head was banged in to the white meat, where he needed staples, in that same area. So I don't advocate just one officer. That's not safe.
Okay, thank you.
Grace, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the conversation. I think it highlights the important point that we don't have a plan for this, even that council's been aware of, and especially not the public. And even submitting details later to council in the next week is not a public process, and certainly not collaborative. As far as we need people to do the work, that's where the community task force comes in. It doesn't have to be police officers already hired in a position to figure it out. If we're talking about establishing programs in this community center, I think it would be way better to utilize the existing community resources. Utilize the teachers, mentors, and tutors who are already there, and people who are in a better position to do that type of work. I just heard from the chief of police that crime is driven by poverty, and I agree. And so then let's address poverty, and we are using money to do this instead. We've been told that these programs work just now, and also that it's important to be focused on data. But I'm not seeing the data that supports the creation of this. So I think that highlights why we need to bring back a plan with justifiable data for a budget amendment later. We need a community plan, not just the chief of police plan. And I think that we need to figure this out in a more holistic, comprehensive way. And it's inappropriate to do that in the next week in a budget conversation when this is the first time that we publicly discussed what that programming would even look like.
Jaya?
Thank you. I do appreciate that clarification. I think there are some really meaningful ideas there. I also have to say that I take objection to saying that there aren't people there, or the implication. As I mentioned, and you know, I recognize that it can be uncomfortable for individual organizations to be highlighted when there's a contentious conversation. But there are incredible nonprofit organizations in that area with licensed social workers. And when we're talking about who would be an excellent mentor, you know, the folks who are already centering specifically brown and black women in our community, making sure that they have the resources to expand those services, thinking about what gaps do we have for supporting folks of other genders in that area as well. We have organizations that are ensuring opportunities for employment in that area already, that are assisting with food assistance, that are serving domestic violence survivors, making sure if they can't get into Courage Connection for whatever reason, that they have a hotel stay. These are the organizations that I talk to and I refer folks to on a regular basis. And I know that they could also do more with more. And I don't have a problem with saying we need a data-driven, we need a community-based approach to deciding where we put those resources for that part of our community. But I think it's also important, when we say that we need personnel, we need people there to do the programming, the infrastructure is already there. Our decision is where do we put the money to increase it and enhance it? And I think there's a strong argument to say, in the organizations that already have the community's trust, in the organizations that already have that expertise, in the communities that are serving our children every day, that are serving individuals with disabilities, that are serving people who need employment. We have incredible churches in this area as well. So I think the idea of figuring out how do we find opportunities for our police department to collaborate more with that part of our community is admirable. But I also think that it's really important to recognize the incredible talent and expertise that is already present, even just within that small part of our community.
I'm pleased the chair, and the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, this is a particular item that I'm a little bit challenged by because I do believe we do need the engagement resource. And I have been listening to what that looks like. I have seen at several of our council meetings, an explanation of what is intended with that. But I am concerned that three people in a satellite facility is not the right answer at this point. While Word 7 has the highest increase of violent crime this year over last year, an engagement center is not about addressing that. And so I'm not comfortable voting to completely remove this concept from the budget. But I am, so I probably, I won't vote to completely remove it. But I do, I am open to talking about reducing it, or talking about not defining the location. I understand that one person may not be able to do this. So what I'm suggesting is what I think I suggested previously, which was this being reduced to two. And at this point, the only option I have is to remove it completely, or leave it in as it is. I'm not comfortable with either of those alternatives. So I'm not going to vote to remove it completely, and hope we can talk about other possibilities.
I'll take the chair back.
I'll take the chair back, thank you.
You're yours.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, are we ready to vote? And so, yes, Chris?
Point of order, just, could you repeat the exact motion?
I will be very careful to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. So this motion is to remove both the funding for three community relations officers and the funding for the location somewhere in the Philo Road area. So if you vote affirmatively, you're voting to remove this from the budget? Is that clarity for everyone? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No. That is another three to three vote. And so that motion is tied, and it fails. Yes, Mary Alice?
I would like to make a motion that the community engagement team go from three to two officers.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Sharice. Discussion? Yes, Mary Alice?
So I said a lot about this when we talked about it last week. Just in case people didn't hear, what James had said, which is putting together a program with one person is really not good. It's very expensive for us to put three officers down there. So I'm willing to do this at two, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Sharice?
And to kind of piggyback off of what Mary Alice said, I do agree with Jaya that there are several other services that are available to people. And, but I also recognize that they can't service everything, and they can't service everyone. And sometimes people fall between the cracks in trying to get from point A to point B. So that may be also an issue. Whereas Chris was talking about the police officer that stood there with him and his mom. And that, that is, that was so incredibly moving when you said that. And sometimes that's what one person might need, is just somebody to stand there in their corner. But if they also have someone that can help them find the services, because, and you have to be able to work in conjunction with the other services too, you know, when that's happening, and one person can't do that. We may not need three, but two would be able, I think, would be able to, to help folks in those conditions. And regarding, you know, when we talk about poverty in Urbana and so on and so forth, I know that that's an issue. I also know that, you know, there have been a couple of companies that have just pulled up and left in the past couple of years that probably increase that problem, definitely. And there's this, you know, so much that anybody, any particular teacher or social worker, or anyone can actually do. And I don't think, I'm not for the either/or. I'm for the this and that. I agree that all boots on the ground help better when we're dealing with this kind of stuff. So I think it would be important for at least to have two officers putting together programming for that. That's not something that one person can do, and then be expected to do it by themselves, or no one at all. And then, of course, we're right back at the starting point. We're right back where we are. So we end up, we end up like not doing anything to help. And I think that having two officers at least, trying to put that programming together, anybody who knows when you're trying to get a new organization or something, it's all well and good for somebody to have it coming out of their head and doing it by themselves. But two works better when you can, you know, many hands make light work. So you want to try to have folks on board to help. And I think that there's no, I don't think there's any one way of, or one entity, or one, I think if they're working in conjunction with all of those other services, that this could be very good for the people in need of that kind of assistance.
All right, Jaya?
Yeah, so I think a few things. One is, and I think this is something that is really important to say, I do think that there is a role in law enforcement responding to a lot of domestic violence situations. I know that's something that a lot of folks don't feel comfortable with, and there are situations where it can make it worse. But often, the most dangerous time for individuals is when they're trying to leave an abusive relationship. So I'm not discounting the fact that there are times where it absolutely is important and appropriate for there to be an officer present. I guess I'm confused why we're trying to recreate the wheel? Why are we adding additional infrastructure expenses instead of investing in the expertise that we have in those areas? You know, I think as we go through this and go back and forth, I don't want to sound like a broken record. But I think that our community members having an ability to say what safety means for them, what support they need, is something that they deserve. I think that being able to be clear about which roles we're asking people to step into based on their expertise, based on what is needed. And I do include law enforcement in that. Like I said, I have absolutely seen times where it is helpful and important to have additional support for folks in domestic violence situations where a social worker might not be the appropriate person. But I do have a problem with saying a mentorship program is more appropriate outside of our nonprofits. I think, you know, when we talk about data, we chose to fund a bunch of incredible organizations with our ARPA money. How are we going to support that going forward? We have no plan for that. Those are one-time funds. So when we're talking about people slipping through the cracks, those cracks are just going to get bigger in Urbana because that ARPA money is going away. And we're going to ask our nonprofits to do more with less? Well, we could be doing more with this money, and they'd be able to make it go farther because they're not going to have to lease another building. They already have the expertise. They already have the training, and they already have the trust of our community. So I understand. I think we're probably going to end up in the same place again. But I will say it again, that I think in terms of our obligation to the community, and our obligation in terms of fiscal responsibility, I think it is irresponsible to go off of anecdote and not go off of data to say this is the right approach for this part of our community that I walk to regularly.
Any further discussion? Grace?
Thank you. I agree with what Jaya has just expressed. And I also want to acknowledge the potential harms of an increased police presence, both financially and physically, emotionally, mentally, scarred with a felony for life. There is, you know, there are very clear national statistics, and I imagine in Urbana, although I don't have that to point to, of crime and drug use being equal amongst demographics and being criminalized disproportionately. We still see racial disparities in the use of force report from 2023 in the Urbana department. And so I guess the question in here to the police department is how will this program avoid overpolicing in that area?
Chief Boone, or?
I have, yes. I understand your concern with overpolicing. That's not new to me. I recognize that police are there to have a partnership with those services that are already providing services. But what I've learned is, through the lens of law enforcement, in the lens of nonprofit, particularly in locations of poverty, as a force multiplier, the outcomes are better. Your concern about overpolicing, that would only occur through practices and patterns. I had not seen that in that area. What I have seen is that that area has been neglected. And because it has been neglected, people are responding from a position of no hope. And they are doing things, unfortunately, sometimes that require a law enforcement response. I suggest, working collaboratively, we can yield some of those responses working together. My term of overpolicing looks like the 1990s, in which there was a war on drugs. There was a model of crime management where you stopped everybody in the community. And all that did was alienate that community towards you. When I use the phrase surgical deployment, that is not a military phrase. That is a phrase based on stopping and interviewing the people you know based on data that are driving crime. Because the moment you interface with someone that's just minding their business, you've lost that community. And again, I'm going to refer to my history. I was the first police chief to bring in the Center for Policing Equity in Norfolk to address overpolicing and disparities. Folks, I've done a lot of brave things as a police chief. The first, the first to develop a policy regarding transgender individuals and their relationship with police chiefs. I did it because I come from those environments. This isn't new to me. But I understand your concerns because you don't know me. You know your history, and I have to respect that. But you have to have some form of respect for my experience as well. So I am acutely aware of your concerns as it relates to over- So I am acutely aware of your concerns as it relates to overpolicing. We don't have the wherewithal, quite frankly, to do that. But I know what that looks like, and that is a recipe I do not embrace.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing an answer. Do you say you don't have the wherewithal to avoid overpolicing? I didn't hear an answer in that. I'm not hearing a plan, which is fine if that's the answer.
Ma'am, I'm not sure what your question is. I tried to address it to the best of my ability. I simply say I know what overpolicing looks like. I have history in implementing partnerships, national partnerships, to avert that. I don't know what else you want me to answer. I don't embrace overpolicing. That's a flawed policy.
Right. Is there any further discussion? So the question on the floor, if everybody's ready to vote, I'll restate what we're considering. I think we are considering essentially bullet number four, which describes reducing the staffing group for the Community Engagement Team pilot to two officers. Is that correct, Mary Alice? That was your intent? And so if we're ready to vote and everybody understands, voting affirmative would reduce what's in the budget currently of three community engagement officers to two community engagement officers. That's what a yes means.
So it's a reduction.
Yes.
Yep.
Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Abstain.
Ms. Wilkin?
Grace, are you there?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was muted. Uh, no.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. That three votes yes, two votes no, and one abstention, so that change has passed.
To clarify, I'm going to mark that as a present, not an abstention, because is it a conflict of interest?
No, sorry. To clarify, I don't feel like it's appropriate to make me vote on two bad options. So I, present is fine.
Okay, present, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any others? What would the next item be? I don't think we have addressed the CSRs or the patrol items. Yes, Mary Alice?
I actually would like to pull the two CSRs. Not because I don't think they're needed, but I do think that they are part of that bigger alternative response plan.
So you're moving to?
So to remove the two non-sworn officers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jaya. Would you like to speak to that motion or that amendment, Mary Alice?
Yeah, I'm trying to be respectful of the fact that we are going to need funds. We're going to need money in order to build up something, whatever that something looks like for the alternative response. And so while I can see the need right now in the police department to have people go out and take reports and so forth to alleviate some of that burden, I do recognize that that is part of what we're talking about with the alternative response. So that's the reason why I think at this time, I don't think we should move forward with those two positions. It doesn't mean that we won't get there, but we just don't know what that full picture looks like right now.
Further discussion? Grace?
I agree with holding off on this so that we can come up with something better in the future. Thank you.
All right. Mary Alice, can you take the chair?
Sure, I'll take the chair, and the chair recognizes James.
Hi, yeah. I'm going to support this motion to remove these for basically similar reasons to what Mary Alice describes, that I think this is part of the answer that we do not have yet, that we need to investigate. I would further, although that's not part of the motion, I would further ask that when we get to the point where we've cut enough funding to have a balanced budget to Elizabeth's satisfaction, that if we are releasing further funds, I would even like us to consider putting those funds in addition to that $105,000 as a part of ongoing implementation for that. It's not relevant necessarily to this particular vote, but as we free up funds and have some headspace there, I would be supportive of increasing that amount beyond the 105. And I'm done.
Would you like the chair back?
I'll take the chair back.
Can I ask a question of staff?
Yes, go ahead, Mary Alice.
So Elizabeth, at the moment, we've eliminated one of the community engagement officers. And if we eliminate the two non-sworn officers, does that put the budget in balance?
Correct. The elimination of the community engagement team really didn't move us closer to a balanced budget because that was a one-time expense. But this change would get you within that 98.5% limit for recurring expense.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, so a vote affirmative on this. If we're ready to vote, a vote affirmative would remove the non-sworn officers that were described in, I think, bullet number five. Packet. Everybody understand? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. That passes unanimously. So we have one, we have an area which involves the senior leadership and the patrol officers. Does anybody want to make a motion with regard to that?
I would move that we add the two new leadership positions, deputy chief and training sergeant, and no new patrol positions until we figure out what the impacts would be.
All right, thank you, Grace. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
That has been seconded by Sharice. Discussion? Grace, did you want to speak to your motion?
I feel like I've exhausted that point that we don't know how patrol officers would reduce overtime.
Just always want to give you a chance since I can't see your hand.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, Sharice.
I'm seconding that because I think it's important to have good leadership regarding how our police officers.
Actually, point of order. Grace, your motion was to add those items, but they're already in. So I guess the sense of your motion is to only add those two and not the currently three additional patrol officers that's in the proposal. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, I think that would be the same way to say that, no additional patrol officers.
Okay, so, yes. So it's about removing the three additional patrol officers as opposed to changing the proposal with regard to the leadership positions?
Yes.
I just want to clarify that. Thank you, Carol, for pointing that out.
And I'm still seconding.
And your second's still okay?
My second is still okay. And I'm saying that because I really think that we, that it's important to have good leadership with the officers that we have. I wish we could add three patrol officers because I think that that would be helpful regarding response time and officers getting from point A to point B. I don't want to burn out the officers that we have, the patrol officers. But we've had one deputy chief that's been in interim for quite a while. And hoping that having a training sergeant, which means that he will be riding along with new, I'm thinking, he'd be riding along with the neophyte officers, patrol officers that we have. We need that, I think it's important for there to be that connection between what a patrol officer sees and what the upstairs is going to be dealing with. And that would help us to be more specific regarding getting patrol officers and what kind of patrol officers we want in Urbana as well. Because I still think we need more patrol officers. But I do know that not everyone that tests is someone that needs to be a police officer. And I think that those leadership positions would be more helpful in making those decisions at hiring times.
Thank you. Mary Alice?
So my thought is this. The original request from the police department was to add an additional three patrol officers. And then in addition to that, to have these two new leadership positions. And as I thought through some of this information, as I looked through the Barry Dunn report, my thought was I think that we could, at this time, add two patrol officers instead of three. But I think it is not responsible of the city council to say no additional patrol staff, which my understanding of this motion basically means there's no addition to patrol staff. So for that reason, I will be voting against this.
Right. Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's very likely that we do need additional patrol, but I, again, don't feel confident saying that because we don't know what responsibilities might be moved away from the police department. And we have no indication that it'll mean less work for the officers that we have since we've been repeatedly told that overtime is likely to increase even with additional officers. So I will be voting to agree with this at this time. And I hope that we can see a plan for what staffing that allows for a break for our officers will look like once we have a clearer sense of overall needs.
Thank you, Jaya. Any other discussion? Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Yep, I will take the chair, and the chair recognizes James.
All right. So I've been pretty clear about this. I do appreciate the motion from where Grace is coming. I do appreciate that it supports, it does not remove the leadership positions that I think we need. But I do think we need to add patrol officers. I am not convinced that we need to add three. But I, because this one says remove all three, I'm going to vote no for this, and we'll look maybe for an alternative motion if this one fails. Thank you.
Chair back?
I'll take the chair back.
Chair's yours.
Yes, Sharice?
I'm just going to add one more thing. And that is, I recognize that during the course of fiscal year, we can make amendments to the budget for the purposes, if needed, to add two more officers, probably. And just from my perspective, I really believe that leadership areas need to be fulfilled. And so that's the main reason why I went along with Grace's motion, why I seconded it, because I know that we can, if the time is needed or if the money is needed, amendments can happen. And if this gets us closer to the budget or even below, you know, what we need for a balanced budget, we may have some wiggle room. So that's what I'm hoping for.
All right, thank you. Nick, Mary Alice?
So my thoughts on this matter are that, yes, we can absolutely do a budget amendment down the road. There are differences in terms of voting. So the number of votes that you need in order to pass a budget is different than the budget amendment. So you need a supermajority for a budget amendment and a simple majority for a budget. My other thought is that we've had people kind of interim in some of these leadership positions. And so I feel like they are very well acquainted with what staffing they already have and have been involved in those hiring decisions. So I think giving some additional patrol staff would be beneficial to the police department. You know, I said three is a lot. Just like I said, three is a lot for community engagement. But to give them no patrol staff, I don't think is the way we should be going.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? So again, this item is a motion to remove the three patrol staff that are, I don't think we have a particular item that had this as, I guess it's.
No, it's in there.
Actually, it's the middle one, isn't it? It's bullet point three, which said do the deputy chief training sergeants, but no additional patrol staff. So it's equivalent to what that one described. So when you vote yes, you're voting to remove the three patrol officers from the budget? Everybody clear on that? Or did I make it more confusing? Okay. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No. That passes four to two. So those are removed.
I believe, Chris, I want to check with you. I think we've addressed all of the items that have, that were on the list. Are you comfortable that we've done that? And so we can come back to the amended main motion that has been adjusted. This is the last opportunity anybody has to make any other suggestions of changes. I wouldn't recommend it at this point, but it is that opportunity. Otherwise, we would be ready to vote to pass this budget on to city council next week where we will talk about it again. Yes, Jaya?
I just wanted to come back to the point that you raised. And I know we might not have a number right now. But to clarify, I also would support, as we look at what will keep us within our fiscal policies, allocating additional savings from these adjustments towards a fund for alternate response as previously described.
Thank you. Should we have a straw poll to assess the whole council's feelings about that concept?
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead, Mary Alice.
I would like to do that when everything is, when we're at the last vote. I mean, in straw poll, in terms of that's kind of like our intention, I think is appropriate. But it should be included in the final vote next week.
Yes, Sharice.
And my understanding was that it was the monies from the community service responders, not everything, but the monies from the community service responders in particular. Is that what you?
Yeah, to clarify, we talked about the $105,000 from the study.
Right.
To preserve that.
Right.
What my intent was to say, and I may not have been clear, was that as we addressed the shortfall in the budget and got to the level that's acceptable, as we removed other things and created more capacity, I wanted us to consider adding that capacity to the implementation, to that $105,000 so that we would have money to implement an alternate response model. And it wasn't just strictly about one of the removals or another. It was as we did these changes and the budget became clear and we knew how much capacity we had, we would allocate a certain part of that, in addition to the $105,000, to an area, a set of funds that we were looking to utilize for an alternate response. It might not be enough, depending on what that model looks like, but it would be a start towards that. That was my intent.
Okay.
All right. Grace, any further discussion?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just, wanted to clarify that we were talking about the recapping, adding the $105,000 plus the money that would have potentially gone to the three community responders to potentially put in a fund that would be designated money without city spending authority. Is that correct in the details?
Yeah, if I could clarify a little bit more, it's, yes, that $105,000, you're absolutely correct on. Then after we got to our rule-based level of funding, because we had to cover some gap in the budget, I was just suggesting that once we covered the gap in the budget, that we consider using the funds that we have saved by these various removals towards the alternate response model or include that with the 105 towards the alternate response model. I can't tell you exactly what that number looks like. I haven't been keeping that score.
Sure, yes.
But it's not just, it's not just the community relations, it's not the community. the community relations reduction, it's the CSR reduction, and now there's a patrol reduction as well, that has created more space in the budget at this point. So I don't know what that number looks like, but I, but I wanted to share that idea of, of making a bigger set aside, particularly for the alternate response implementation. Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, thank you, and I agree with that.
Sorry, just to, to further clarify and make, you know, as we're thinking about straw pulling, the 105 is already something that we have agreed upon, we're just figuring out the exact process to make sure that it fits the model that was described earlier. And just to kind of echo what, what James is saying, is on top of that, to straw pull, if we, if there's general agreement, that additional funds, once we have a sense of what that total amount would be, should be considered to be allocated towards that fund as well.
Yes, Mary Alice.
And I think my clear...
Go ahead, Grace, sorry.
Uh, my clarifying question is about the spending authority, back to the first part of this meeting tonight, about if we're doing a straw poll to designate this money, does that include without spending authority, so it would require council approval to be spent? Because once it's in the budget, it doesn't require any further approval from the council, and therefore the public.
Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're discussing is further money to be available from the way that we described it earlier, which would ensure that it was specifically safeguarded for the use by the council to support alternate response, either for their study or beginning the implementation after the Barry Dunn study is complete. So making it very clear that it, it's something that would not require a budget amendment, because it's important that the council is able to initiate that process, but it is clearly designated as funding for that purpose and for no other purpose, which is what we agreed upon earlier in this meeting.
Mary Alice.
So while I agree with what we did earlier, which is the Barry Dunn money and the two non-sworn officers being part of the alternative response, I am concerned that if we are removing three patrol officers and we're saying, that's not going into alternative response, and we discover that we still need staffing, then we don't have the money to do that. So I think I would rather say that we would use the money rather than alternative response, but to enhance public safety, and that would give it a broader brush.
Yes, Jaya?
I'm not going to vote for that. I, I don't have a problem with separating out those different pieces, but in saying "public safety," that's how the Barry Dunn study went way off track from what the original intent was to. The goal with that study was to explore alternate responses focused on racial justice. That piece we don't even have yet. What we do have are staffing studies, so I'm not comfortable putting a broad umbrella. I think it's really important that we're specific. I think as we're straw pulling, we can certainly make that argument of separating out, you know, a discussion around funding where, you know, certain funds would be considered for putting into additional support for community, for alternate response, rather, and maybe not defining what the remaining amount is for, if you're talking about the patrol positions to retain that flexibility. I can totally understand that, but I'm not, I'm not going to change what I previously recommended in terms of the language that we all agreed upon, because I don't trust that it's not going to end up just going to further policing or some other purpose, because the definition of public safety in this community, or at least the way it has been implemented through the city, has really focused on police and fire. And while those are definitely part of public safety, there are a lot of other pieces that our community means when we say "public safety." So I, I hear what you're saying, I don't have a problem with differentiating which funds we're suggesting are held aside, but I, I will not be changing the, the terminology that I previously used.
Thank you. Then maybe it'd be best that we leave it at the 105 plus the CSR savings at this point, to not muddy the issue.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Yes, girl.
I, I do just want to make sure that, that we're all on the same page about, about, I understand your intent, right, of what you just articulated about wanting to have this money set aside for, you know, the specific alternative response, and that you would like it to require council approval and not a budget amendment. And, and what we agreed to do is figure out, try to figure out a mechanism for that. I just want to be clear, we haven't figured out a mechanism for that, but we understand the intent, and we will, I, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that we're not, we're not quite there yet.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was thinking that as we were talking about this, but we haven't figured out the model exactly yet. Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, I, I do think that's important to say, but I also think it's important that it is somewhere in whatever is passed as a binding portion of this budget ordinance, that that money is particularly set aside. And I know that's a tight turnaround time, I'm not exactly sure what that process looks like, but I think it, it has to be something that is binding in this budget.
All right, thank you. All right, now are we ready to vote, to send this to City Council? So we're voting on the budget as a whole, with the changes that we've made tonight, to be sent to City Council, to be put on the regular agenda for discussion at City Council next Monday. Everybody clear on that? So affirmative means send it to Council.
That game point of order, were, were we going to do a straw poll on adding the three community responders to that pot set aside? I don't think we did that.
We, we can, it did seem like everybody here was on board with that, Grace. If you're on board, if you're on board with that...
Okay, that's what we're counting as a straw poll. Yep, I am.
Then we're all on board with that.
Okay, great, thank you.
It wasn't an official thumbs up, thumbs down straw poll, but I, I did hear support from everybody here. And now I have it from Grace. All right, so, yes.
Sorry, to clarify, this is with no recommendation at this point.
This is no recommendation, yeah. So there will be still opportunity to discuss fine tuning. All right, Clerk, can we have another roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you for that work. I know that was a, a long discussion, a lot of, a lot of rabbit holes to go down with regarding to that, but I, I do believe everybody has been able to share their feelings and have their questions put out there and come to a vote. So I, I hope we're, I hope we're satisfied that we have worked the process as best we could. We have one more thing on the agenda, which I have to find here. We have a discussion regarding municipal electric aggregation agreement authorization.
Can I clarify that there is still council communication at the end of this meeting for anyone who would want to stay? Just to clarify.
Thank you, Tim and Scott, for staying with us to deliver the message that we're going to get on this tonight.
We're here for you.
My fingers are crossed for good news.
Well, we'll get into it. All right, I'll just give a brief introduction, then I'll kind of turn it over to Scott. Pretty much, we're coming in to, talking about our municipal electric aggregation. We're coming up on the end of this cycle, and the big picture here is, this has been a program that we've had for a long time. We just wanted to share some history of that and just kind of go through what this is, some of the market volatilities here, and why we would like some direction from you guys on how we proceed in the future. And I'll let Scott take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've talked about aggregation in the past, but we haven't done a deep dive on what it is and how we operate this program in a while, and so we thought we would spend a little bit more time than, than we usually do. First, some, some terminology. When we talk about a consultant, we're talking about an energy consultant who performs a number of tasks, including bringing vendors to market to bid on an electric supply agreement. When we talk about a vendor or a supplier, we're talking about a company that, that provides electricity supply. In our state, electricity delivery is a regulated utility, a monopoly regulated utility, Amerin Illinois, in our area, but electricity supply is a deregulated market, and so we can choose any different supplier we want. When we talk about RECs, that's shorthand for renewable energy credits. Renewable energy credits are how we purchase the renewable attributes of electricity generated by renewable energy sources. There's really a separate market for that. Electrons are produced by a number of different power plants, regardless of how those electrons are produced, that's one market. Renewable energy credits are generated by, say, a wind turbine separately, and sold separately from those electrons, and we buy those renewable energy credits to green our, our power supply. And then the last thing we're going to talk about today is the price to compare, or the default electricity supply price. The, i- if you move into, if you turn on electric, electric service in Amerin territory, and you simply take no further action, you will be defaulted into a certain electricity supply. That's actually not Amerin electricity supply, although that's generally how people describe it. In fact, the state of Illinois has an, Illinois Power Agency that buys electricity, passes it through Amerin and ComEd at no additional markup, and that's referred to as default electricity supply price to compare, and somewhat incorrectly, the Amerin supply. Okay, so municipal electric aggregation is the bulk purchase of electricity for all the residents, all those residential and actually, in fact, small commercial accounts in the city. This is created by state statute at the same time that the state deregulated the electricity supply market. So the point is to, instead of 10,000 households each making their own best choice they can for an electric supply option, we bundle them into one purchasing group, bring in an expert in this market, and bring bidders to bear and, and get better prices. So what else do we want to say? We, we, our program is operated as an opt-out program, so we automatically enroll every account into our electricity supply price that we've secured. That's how almost every municipal electric aggregation program in, in the state is operated, because if you have an opt, you know, if you, if you do the reverse, where you, we secure a price and then simply make it available to residents, almost no one will opt into it. They will stay on the default electricity supply price, or they may be subject to some bad offers by phone or email or at the door. We're working on a draft press release on that right now. We've published one a year, year and a half ago, and we're working on dusting that off and, and making, and publishing that again to remind residents. The, although we are enrolling all of our residents in an electricity supply option or offer, they still only receive one power bill from Amerin. So anyone can look at their Amerin bill, you go down the left-hand side, and you look for electric supply, and that's where you will find what supplier you're on. If you stayed on the, the default electricity supply, it'll say BGS, Basic Generation Service. If you're on aggregation, it'll say that. If you've chosen a different retail electric supplier, that will also be listed there. So that's on your Amerin bill, you're only going to get one bill. Let's see. Go to the next one. So this chart shows the entire history of the municipal electric aggregation program in Urbana. And what we've, what we've plotted here is PTC, Price to Compare, that's the default electricity supply price. That's the price that when we go to bid, we're trying to beat that price. And that's published in the old days, and, and when, when things were stable in this program and in this market, that was published once a year by the state of Illinois, and then we had time to try and beat that price on a one, two, three-year contract. But we would have a lot of price certainty in terms of that price we're trying to beat. The red line is the MEA, Municipal Electric Aggregation Price. That's the price that we secured, auto-enrolled all of our residents into, sent them a letter saying, "We're doing this for you, but you can opt out now if you want, choose a different supplier, or stay on the default price, or you can opt out at any time during our one, two, three-year contract period." And then you can see that the averages over time.
And just a big takeaway from this chart is that, over time, the MEA program has been successful, we've saved money over time, but as you can see, you know, in the last few years, there's more volatility in this, where the market price is harder to lock in, and we'll go into a little bit more detail on that.
This is another way of viewing all of our data. Again, you can see the increased market volatility in, in the later years. The green line is our annual savings, so all of our participants in aggregation, what those annual savings are. And you can see that there were years where we had a net loss that collectively, we, we would have saved more money if we hadn't been in a contract. But of course, you can't rescind a contract just because you're, you're, you're not winning in it, you know, for the last three, six, nine months of the contract. The blue bars represent the cumulative savings of this program over time, and you can see those dipped below positive at one point, and then came back to three, you know, $3 million in year 2022, astounding year, saved $3.5 million total for rate payers that year. So you can see that, you know, there is a market price for electricity, the state is out there making big buys from time to time, passing that through to Amerin and ComEd. We're out there making smaller buys on a different timeframe, working to get better pricing and beat the, that price to compare. Here, you can see that, what we're showing here is, is the implications for our green power purchases. I mentioned renewable energy credits is how we green our power supply. That's an important component in our greenhouse gas reduction strategy for the entire community, for the city of Urbana. And in the, in the past, we were always able to create a decent mark, a margin of savings as compared to the price to compare. And then we took a portion of that savings, and we bought renewable energy credits with all of our electricity supply. And there was always this healthy margin, and we were always able to buy renewable energy credits covering 100% of our supply. In our last contract, the margin of savings was so small, between the prices we were offered and the price to compare, that we had to dramatically reduce, down to 26%, the amount of renewable energy credits we were buying with our supply in order to maintain some small margin of savings. And so you can see the implications here. Now, most of our electricity supply through aggregation is in the residential sector. I mentioned that technically, small commercial accounts are also enrolled, but that's a quite small portion. So you can see that overall, our greenhouse gas inventory in the stacked area graph stayed flat, even though we bought less renewable energy credits, and the residential sector of our greenhouse gas inventory actually increased in the last year. Now, it stayed, the overall stayed flat, and we did stay under our first target of a 25% reduction, because other elements of our greenhouse gas inventory continue to go down, which is what we want. If, the, the bottom chart shows that, what would the outcome if we had remained at 100%? You would see we would continue to decline in our pollution reduction. So I mentioned that, and, and some of those charts showed that, in the, the first maybe eight years of the municipal electric aggregation program, and we've been doing this since the state has authorized this, in the first eight years, things were fairly stable, and we always had a decent margin of savings that we could count on. A lot has changed in the, in the energy market, both, you know, the private participants and also the regulations. State and federal regulations have, have changed, international trade and politics has, have changed, enormous changes in, in the natural gas markets and the export of natural gas. That's important, because a lot of electricity is made from natural gas. The price to compare that we're always trying to beat, as I mentioned, that used to be fixed for 12 months at a time. Recently, the state has gone to both a summer and a nonsummer rate, so two different prices throughout the course of the year, one four months, one eight months. And there was even a moment, I don't remember if it was 2021 or 2023... And there was even a moment, I don't remember if it was 2021 or 2023, where the state changed prices that they had published even more frequently than that. We've also, you know, been working to support the adoption of onsite or rooftop solar in our community as a clean power option. And, you know, that's, that's electricity that would not be enrolled. It'd be produced onsite, so it's not enrolled in municipal electric aggregation. I did check that, and we are at about 4% of residential accounts in Urbana have onsite generation. That seems small, but it's actually, you know, when we talk to other cities, they're impressed by that. I think their rates are much lower. We also have a new electric supply option called Community Solar in the state of Illinois. That didn't exist for the first eight or nine years of municipal electric aggregation in the state. Community Solar allows households to subscribe their electricity to a solar array that's somewhere out there, not on their property. We've seen the continued growth of the state's renewable portfolio standard. That is the law that requires all of the electricity suppliers to gradually, every year, increase the proportion of their electric supply that they sell in the state that is from renewable sources. And that, every year, is improving our greenhouse gas inventory without any other actions taken here. So moving forward, we have a number of things for council to consider. One is there, so we are offered, when we go to market to get bids for municipal electric aggregation supply, these offers are made available for the remainder of the day. If, you know, bids come in at 10:00 or 2:00, they're, they're good. They're honoring those prices till 5:00 PM. That does not give us time to have two council meetings. Now, in the past, in the first eight years, we would come and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement, you know, two months, three months before our consultant said we were probably going to bid. And that worked for a while. Recently, because the market has gotten more volatile, we're not getting that kind of several-month advance notice from our consultant. They're calling with two weeks or 10 days and saying the best date to go to bid is this date. Last time this happened, we came before you. And we, without going to committee the whole, we went straight to city council and got the authorization, you know, on nine days' notice. But that's really not viable. I mean, it's not a great strategy, let's put it that way. Talking to our consultant and calling some other cities, maybe half, three-quarters of cities, you know, I haven't surveyed every city, but a lot of cities have just amended their ordinance. They all started like we did. We all, everybody has the same ordinance, the same resolutions. They started like we did, ran into this problem, and ended up amending their ordinance to authorize the mayor or the mayor and the city administrator on an ongoing basis because this is, you know, this is a market offer that's good for a day. So that's one thing I want to mention. Other things that we're seeking council feedback on is, you know, how we want to approach these supply offers that aren't so obviously saving a significant margin of money. You know, if we have to give up, you know, I haven't even mentioned, in the old days, we would get low electricity prices, buy 100% renewable energy credits, and take a city fee that would offset all the staff time for this program. We reduced our renewable energy credits proportion, and we zeroed out our city fee in the last contract. So these are different mix-and-match choices that we want to get some feedback on. So, you know, there are a couple of options here where we can, we can say, we only want a supply offer if it's cheaper than the price to compare after we've added, you know, the cost of supply, the consultant fee, the renewable energy credits, and the city fee. If we can't get it all, we'll pass. Or we can say, you know, supply plus consultant fee plus the renewable energy credits. If that's cheaper than price to compare, we'll take that deal. Or hey, if, if supply plus the consultant fee is cheaper than the price to compare, it's just an energy deal, it's not a renewable, it's not a renewable energy project, we'll take that deal. You know, these are, these are different mix-and-match options that we want to get some feedback from council on.
Yeah, and just to kind of put a pin in all of this stuff is, there's a lot of different things here. There's just, it's not dissimilar to playing the stock market. So we wanted to get some feedback from council so that we're not making decisions that aren't within your interest. You know, the last cycle, I believe, we were just a scotch under the price to compare with buying some renewable energy credits still. And the question coming into this next cycle is, where are we going to be? And are we, are we willing to continue down that path? Or is there a point where we're going to say no? There are things like never accepting the supply and consultant fee over to the, the price to compare. But if we're doing that and buying some renewable energy credits, it's economical versus environmental benefits for consideration. And these aren't, these aren't specifically hard and fast, but we felt like these were good things to focus on because we wanted to try to alleviate subjectivity at the time of bid. We didn't want things, you know, we can do, our, our energy broker, you know, they could do modeling and stuff, but we, we don't know that it's going to be right. We don't know that it's going to be wrong. So we wanted to kind of pin things down to things that were available at the time of bid with direction from you guys, so we knew how to act in those moments.
All right, do we have questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Grace.
Um, are you just asking for kind of informal guidance here? Or would this be the guidance you would use to make an official purchasing policy on it? I guess I'm just not understanding the steps here or what level of formality we're talking about.
Sure, we're not, we're not asking for action tonight. Mostly, this is formalizing this with you guys. We'd like some feedback from you guys, and probably sometime in the next month, we would tailor either a resolution or a modified ordinance or something to that effect that, based on your guys' kind of general thoughts, helped guide the development of that.
Yes, Therese.
I want to say, I don't know if it was last year, a couple of years ago, because you were talking about the variable fees that were going on rather than being, and I know that that happened a lot, and residents dropped out of the aggregation program because they, they're like, we're paying more than what's out there. But they did that, and then like the next month, the people that they had signed on with would raise the fee or raise something else. Is that still going on?
So one of the reasons that we do this program, we solicit competitive prices, we auto-enroll all of our residents, and we give them an option to opt out, is we expect that communities that don't have a municipal electric aggregation program are going to get a lot more attention from bad offers, from bad electricity supply offers, like what you're describing, where there's a low introductory price, and then it balloons after a month or three months or whatever. We think that our residents are going to get a lot more of those offers made to them if we don't have a program that's already enrolling them in aggregation.
So if they opt out and they end up with one of those bad offers and they decide to opt back, can they opt back in if they, if they need to, if they want to?
Yes, yes, but they're going to be subject to the terms of that contract, which may have, you know, an early cancellation penalty.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to understand that. And, and the other thing I wanted to ask, because I had a constituent call me, and she said she'd gotten this postcard, and she was like highly upset. She didn't want to be in it, and my advice to her was, well, you don't have to be. You know, call Ameren and opt out. Is that how that can happen? Or if she doesn't send like back the postcard saying she wants to opt out, can, because my understanding, at least my practice has been in the past, I didn't opt out of this. But in shopping for electricity, I call Ameren, and they have to tell you what the prices are for different electrical suppliers.
So to opt out, folks are going to contact the supplier, and there's three ways to do it. They can return the opt-out card, which is mailed once at the beginning of the contract period, or if the price changes at the beginning, before that price changes. They can call the supplier, or they can opt out on the supplier's website. All that information is on this, there's a webpage on the city's website to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
So how would you like for us to give you, I feel like I'm going to have to watch this again to just really kind of understand it. So do you want us to email you? What is the direction for us?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. It gives you guys some more time to digest this stuff. You know, we don't need direction this evening. But, you know, ideally, we'd like to get direction, I would say, by the first week of Ju, July.
Yeah, I'd like to come back in July with, with authorization for the, last, last year, I think we authorized both the mayor and the city administrator, figuring that, you know, one may be out of town, the other can execute the supply agreement, just to make sure there was someone, you know, again, we have something like two, four, six hours to execute this agreement. So I was hoping to come back in July. Our, our broker is ready to, to take another group of cities to market. So I'd like to come back in July with a resolution, authorize the mayor to execute agreement, and also a resolution renewing a service contract with the consultant. And those will be, you know, co-terminists, they start and end at the same time. So we don't, the consultant gets paid as a, as part of the flow of the deal. And so if we don't accept a retail supply agreement, we don't pay them anything. And then also, their payments end when our contract ends.
All right, so we will, we will give you feedback. One thing I did want to confirm based on our conversation this last weekend, Scott. The city of Urbana, staff of the city of Urbana will never show up at a residence store offering them municipal aggregation or group solar installation or so forth. If somebody gets, has someone show up at their doorstep, they can count on the fact that that's not a city.
It's not a city of Urbana staff person, nor is it a city of Urbana vendor or contractor or partner.
So if they're happy with their aggregation situation and their power situation, they should just ask those individuals to leave.
Absolutely.
All right.
Jane?
Yes, Grace.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I think more time to think about this will be helpful. It sounds like Scott and Tim, y'all are on the right direction. And I'm, you know, very interested in your recommendations and have confidence in that. It sounds like, you know, what you're proposing makes sense, make sure that it's price competitive and has some environmental benefits and balancing those things out for the best deal that we can. So I think that, you know, we're on the right track. And, you know, if you propose the details, we can talk more details then. My question was about the current aggregate and how much longer we have on that. Because it sounds like we're, we're not committed, our consultants will go out and rebid soon.
Our current supply agreement ends with the December meter read.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we do have some time.
Well, the, when the contract ends and a good time to go to market and get bids are not really related. So we're, you know, we're six months ahead or something. And our consultant's ready, has already taken other groups to bid. And we weren't, we weren't ready to authorize. So we're going to be put into another, you know, group of cities with our consultant. But they're, they're ready to bid as soon as this group of cities is ready to authorize their, their electeds, actually. So it's, I would say it's a matter of some urgency. I'm, I'm thinking, you know, early July, I'd like to be back and get those resolutions passed.
That's not very long from now. One other thing, it felt like to me that at some point, because of the market and the way things are panning out, that a slightly lower than 100% renewable rate might actually have more participation. And so in the long run, result in more use of renewable energy. Is that a fair way to look at how that dynamic is playing out?
The way we approached it the last time where we had this small margin of savings that we weren't able to, or we chose not to buy as much green power is this. We view the program as being dependent on having savings and that the savings buy the renewable energy credits. So if the program can't generate enough savings to buy the maximum amount of credits, then we buy less. Now theoretically, we could take a price that's higher than the price to compare so as to buy, you know, more renewable energy credits. But we don't think that would be well-supported. And of course, as you, as you described, if we're higher than the price to compare, some people will research that and, and opt out of our program and go somewhere else.
Yeah, so in that, in that sense, my tendency would be to pick the path that maximizes the use of green energy or supports the buying of the credits, even if it may be slightly counterintuitive to what we've thought of in the past as always 100%. At least that's my perspective. Any others? Great, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll send something to follow up with you guys via email too, just to prompt you, maybe even just a survey of, give us your vote, something simple for you. Okay, thank you.
All right, we are now at council input. Does anybody have anything to say? Mary Alice.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with city council and those who are still in the audience that I've been digging into some of the crime numbers, trying to find out what the trends are in Urbana specifically. And then two things came, were revealed to me. One is that the federal government changed how we're reporting crime right around 2021. So they used to have a uniform crime reports, which is everything before then, which was a subset of crime, violent crime, that all the cities were supposed to report to the FBI. Then they changed to, I'm going to pronounce it incorrectly, the Nibers or the Neighbors, right? Nibers, which actually reports a lot more than what the uniform crime report was doing. And the transition for the city of Urbana was in 2022. And so 2022 numbers are not complete because they were transitioning between the different reporting cycles. I'm still digging into a couple of things because the state of Illinois reports even different numbers, which is kind of interesting. And I just wanted to, once I have all that kind of figured out to the best of my ability, I will send it out to the city council so you can see some of the things that I've been thinking through as we go through the different numbers that people keep presenting. So that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Jia.
Yeah, so, I mean, I feel like I've said a lot over the last few weeks. I don't know that I have much more to add. I don't think where we are is representative of what we're hearing from our community. And I think that's disappointing for a city that says that our residents are at the top of the organizational chart. I did want to clarify that in, yesterday, when I mentioned that I was disappointed in the, the size and comments that I was hearing, that was from folks up here, not from folks participating in public comment. I had a conversation with a community member earlier who was like, was that about us? No. I think it would be interesting if our mics were on all the time. I think there are times where we'll turn to each other and ask for clarification or, you know, check and see how someone's doing because we are human. But I, in these years on council, have been very disappointed with the way some individuals respond to our residents' right to engage in the democratic process. So I did want to clarify that piece. I guess I would just encourage people to continue to participate, recognize that there's an election coming up. Think about what your priorities are. And I remain committed to making sure that there is some sort of task force. I don't even know, we've tried that before, but it needs to actually happen. We need to make sure that our community members actually have a voice in what public safety means to them. That's something that people have been saying for a very long time. And as a council member, we can say we believe in that, we think it should happen. And I just hope that it actually does while we still are in this term because I think our residents deserve to have their voices more participatorially heard.
All right, Diane.
I just wanted to assure, assure people that yes, the next step is the formation of a committee or a task force to guide us into the next phase of this report, which is to explore alternative response options, to engage in a whole lot more community discussion and get feedback, and then to work with the consultants to develop the choices that council will have. will have to make in terms of what you want a public safety and alternative response model to look like. So this process is by no means over. We're just in the next phase. Yeah, the first phase was the staffing analysis for fire and safety, but the, actually the hard, the really hard work now begins and that's the collaborative and intensive examination of what the entire community believes is important and what public safety is going to look like in the future in Urbana. And as far as responding to the community, not everyone does come to city council meetings, not everyone even sends emails, but one of the reasons I go to so many community events, as, as many as I possibly can, is I find that, actually anytime I go to the grocery store, I find that people are way more comfortable speaking one-on-one outside this chamber. And that's where I hear from constituents from all over the city. And, and I am confident that, that what you landed on in this budget actually is a pretty good compromise and it is a pretty good representation of the entire community as well. So, so again, our next, our next steps are the, are the creation of what we want our entire public safety response to look like going into the future. And we're going to need everybody helping with that. So thank you.
Charisse.
Um, I just want to say that I was so pleased today to have such a, a very productive conversation with, with one of the input people from last night. And she and I talked for a long time. We didn't agree on stuff, but we respected each other's perspective on why we had, didn't agree. And that is something that needs to also kind of be considered. I enjoyed speaking to her and I encourage anyone to call me on my cell and, and I prefer to have that kind of input as well. My constituents that have issues, like I was telling Scott about the one with the, the aggregation, she's, I've helped her before and gotten her input before about several things. So I have no problem with, with speaking to people that want to talk about any subject that comes up actually. So, thank you.
All right, Grace, did you want to say anything?
Uh, yes, thank you. Just ditto Jaya's comments and agree in some of the disappointments and frustration in this process over the years of looking into what community safety means and what we want in Urbana. And then also don't agree with the notion that the entire community is ever going to want or agree on anything. I think we have 37,000 some individual perspectives and beliefs and I don't think that it's that simple or generalized to say that anything is what the entire community wants. I think that's all for now. Thank you.
All right. Mary Alice, would you?
I'll take the chair and the chair recognizes James.
Yeah, I did want to reiterate that my question with Scott about the aggregation thing, there are incidents going on in our community where individuals are coming door to door trying to sell energy, trying to sell solar programs, trying to sell solar installations. And they are, they are not good actors. They are misrepresenting, representing themselves. I've, I've had constituents tell me that when they try to ask these individuals to leave or tell them they know they're not part of the city program, that they will get angry and aggressive. And so I do want people to be aware of, of that concern. That's not to say that there, there may not be people doing this appropriately and soliciting in a reasonable manner, but I do want everyone to be aware and alert and understand that if, if it gets out of hand, you can, you can ask for assistance with regard to that. I, I, I do want to thank staff and everyone who was part of making the lunch on the lawn today in celebration of Juneteenth, an event. It was a great event. It was much more pleasant than I expected from a heat standpoint because of the clouds and the wind. It was a, a good time to get together with city staff and others and enjoy, enjoy a meal together. I also want to point out that we, that this Saturday at Martin Luther King Park, we'll have the Jetty Roads Celebration Neighborhood Day that runs from noon to four. It's a, it's a great time. There's good food, there's good music. They'll be recognizing several individuals who have meant a lot to the community. So I, if you have a chance, it's going to be hot, it, it's going to be warm, but there will be a lot of tents and a lot of people out there. So come out and enjoy the community. And that's it.
Do you want me to close?
You can close this out.
All right, with that, no further business in front of this committee. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.